During the last council meeting that we were here, we proposed a grand marshal policy and there was suggested changes to make to it. So in front of you tonight is the changes that we made. To give you a little bit of the background on the parades and the history of them and who has chosen the grand marshal in the past. And the major change that we have made is that moving forward for the July 4th parade, Alliance Club will choose up to three grand marshal candidates for the July 4th parade that will be chosen by May 1st. Select names will be then presented to town council at the first council meeting in May. Council will then choose a name out of those recommended names during the June meeting and that will go on to be announced to be the council chosen grand marshal for the July 4th parade. For the Christmas parade, it's a similar policy in that the Union Rotary Rotary will choose up to three names by October 1st. The council will then choose a name during the first council meeting in October. We will then announce that and give the name to the Rotary Club and then the parade will go on. So I just want to see if there's any other questions, but that was the one change that was recommended during the last council meetings that we come back with multiple names from these two clubs that chooses the grand marshal.
It's good. Thumbs up, all men. Do you need to approve that?
Yes, please.
I need a motion to approve the grand marshal policy.
Mr. Cohen moved to approve it, all in favor?
unanimous. Okay, there was more to this one with the nonprofit fee scheduling policy and banners. Patrick, Mr. Lam.
I'll take my nonprofit fee schedule policy first. So kind of all three of these kind of went together all at the same time, came out of one or two council meetings. So the de waiver nonprofit organization policy, if you remember the last council meeting we talked about, we have a certain number that we would allot per calendar year. So we whittled that down to five per year that we would allow. Those recommendations would go through a process and come to the parks committee. They would ultimately decide based off of some information that we worked with the attorney on that they would submit certain things to the parks committee. They would then choose any number of things that they could be waived from, either renting and enlist which parks they can rent or with shelters they could de waive those fees on. But it also states that we're not responsible as the town to do any, other than just waiving the fee, we aren't planning the event or doing anything like that. All that's given by whatever organization is getting the fee waiver.
Something else, anything?
Yes.
Mr. Collins made a motion, good. Patrick?
Mr. Mayor, the last item is in regard to banners and I appreciate your help on giving some background information regarding to that item. In our records, we don't have anything except that it was done, it was done one time in the past, but we don't have a policy right now that we cover banners on our properties for nonprofit organizations. So again, we have, we have the option if we do offer the parks with some events and we want to go a step further by allowing the banners to be posted on our properties, we have that option, or we would say, no, we're not going to allow that on any of our properties for all nonprofit organizations. So we've really this before you to kind of make the decision whether we need to allow the banners or not to allow the banners.
And how long do the, is this just for the function that the nonprofits doing or is this, how long's banners going to stay up there?
That is correct. It's for the nonprofit organization that doing the event.
During the event.
Yes, sir. And that's so many things we have to decide on before the event and be consistent with all of them.
Well, that makes sense. I would, I would prefer and would like to hear either Jason or Adams' thoughts on that. The negatives to it and the positives to it because, you know, there might be something we're missing there. Or is there, is there a negative or positive? How do you look at that?
I think it ultimately can go back to the town's ordinance and requirements of the town's ordinance. That would go back to planning, that would be one place that would go. Jason did reach out to a lot of other municipalities around us through his connections with parks and recs and what they allow. And anybody else that we reached out to does not allow for them for any nonprofit or anybody other than the town to advertise for events in the park or on town property, other than the day of an event. Like if you have a picnic going on, yeah, you can have a banner up for your company or whatever that day, but not before the event or after the event.
If I may add, Mr. Cohen, I think that the downside of it would be if someone riding and see the banner, he might not know the background behind the policy in regards to nonprofit. And so that's going to be a bit confusing and we're going to have to provide explanation to interrogate the question why they would allow money for nonprofit, not for us, et cetera.
Jason, your recommendation?
Similar to what Adam said, with speaking of other municipalities, they do not allow it and I think to kind of piggyback off what Patrick said, it can be a challenging aspect if other groups or organizations drive by, see a banner, they're going to want to either put a banner up in their location, which would then go against some of the planning zones that are currently allowed.
So you're saying, what about the day of?
Day of, I find no problem. I think it's a good thing to promote it, the day of, and that way gives more recognition for whatever the activity of your event is.
Right, so you have to vote on this one also?
No, I was going to say, well, I was going to ask council, but a big discrimination problem between a nonprofit and any other business to say, well, why them and not us? But that was already answered.
And also just, I mean, the other problem is the concern that people like, well, even a town event and a town supported activity, even with corporations, non-profit or nonprofit, and unfortunately, the town's want to make sure that it separates itself from the activities.
No preferential treatment given to anyone.
I make a motion that we go back to 2012, Mr. Cohen. If you remember, ITAA, a nonprofit, had requested to put their registration on for two weeks on there. And you also brought into the conversation, on the other side of 74, we had banner locations to allow Porta Ridge, the same opportunity. And that was approved. And it was approved for that moving forward. Can I come in?
That's what my dad would say, a force of a different garage.
Nonprofit policy that has a little down ability to do something.
We're talking about nonprofit baseball, football organizations put their signs out, not in front of parks, but everywhere, you know? They put it on the edge of corners and everything, so children will know where to go sign up for baseball. There's a lot of people, or football, or whatever, there's a lot of people in town that don't know, you know, and they look and they go, oh, there's a sign that says, go sign up for football. I think what we're doing now is stretching this out.
Thank you, I understand, I second that. We allowed them to use these spots that they're asking for, for the two weeks, and they've used it consistently.
Actually, they use it for more than two weeks.
Well, they took, while the town wasn't using it, they've been using them consistently since. At least ITAA has that available to the other side. If we put this policy in place, does this jeopardize and ruin their ability because of the policy to continue to do so?
I'd say, just say, no, because what the sign says, the sign says, the signups are from, and I'm making up dates, April 1st to May the 3rd. So you have multiple times you can sign up, it has multiple locations that you can sign up. It's more of an information sign than it is advertising sign. It's just getting, letting the people, I don't know, you guys got anything?
I'm just asking if the policy, if the new policy would remove their ability to use the, because of the new policy.
But they're not using the parks, they're not, they're putting them all over, they're putting them all over the place. They're not putting them in front of a park to advertise the, an event, they're putting them all over to say, signups are for baseball or whatever. I mean, I don't, am I?
Yeah, I get that. Go ahead, make a motion.
Go ahead.
I want to make a motion. So I'd like to make a motion to approve banners on just the day of the event.
Mr. Savoy made a motion, all in favor? That would be unanimous. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Just a quick history on this project. This project has been out there for many, many years, and I would say probably about 10 years. And the issue with that project is that sheet flow coming from the side of, or actually upstream from the wastewater treatment plant, which is a county property, going and sheet flowing onto the backyards of one of our residential community. I myself met with the county about six months ago in their office and I shared with them the design that will mitigate for that problem. Take that runoff all the way that's caused by that industrial park and route it into the flood plain containment and make sure that no water quality issues is involved. We changed the design three times so far and we shaved that with the county, but the county would not allow us to move onto their properties, which is inside the wastewater treatment plant. It's a straight tangent that goes all the way from the top of the hill down to the flood plain. So we interfered a lot of design, we made the changes, we met on numerous occasions. We kept the property owners informed in regard to our plan. Last week, actually, I would say three weeks ago, we shared our inquiry request with them and they gave us a January date to start. If you go to the site right now, we were advised by one of their consultants that's working on one of their big tanks, that this is the right time to do it because there is no construction activity. And you go out there, you see about 700 linear feet in that area that is the time for us to do it, but they refused to allow us, I'm sorry to use that word, to go in there and take foot to pipe, which it used to be a channel first, but they not given us permission to do so. Even though we went to the efforts of replacing an entire fence, hundreds of feet of a six inch high chain link fence, but still we're not getting any response from them. We just told them last week that if we don't give them a response and allow us to get in there during the dry season, to install the improvements, we're going to make recommendation to council to pull the money out because the cause of the problem really is caused by runoff from county property, not from city property. So this is where we are right now and we just want to bring it before your attention and let you know that we're not getting any response and that it should be a county problem, to be honest with you. There was a pond in the past in that industrial park, but over the years that pond for some reason was taken away. And that pond used to contain that water and to prevent it from coming into the backyards. The big problem that we're having right now, which is, I witnessed that myself, all these tall trees that we have in the backyards, they're about 100, 150 feet tall. The roots are becoming very exposed to the point that some of them are leaning. And we made the county aware that some of those trees will fall on the fence and fall onto your property and it could be dangerous for the property owners. But I think that that point didn't ring a bell, but without taking too much on the county, I would like to put before you that we budgeted $150,000 for that project, we paid three times for the design, and we're not getting anywhere. So I wanted you to be aware of the problem and if we're not getting any response, I think we should go out and take that money and use it somewhere else to another, so the imagination.
It's a shame that, you know, in the past, the county has wanted to partner with us to help expand their waste treatment facility. And here, you know, they won't return the favor in partnering back with us. It's very unfortunate. I agree, if you're not getting any response, I think it's best to use that money where it could be needed.
To add to that, Mr. Savoy, they proposed before us one time this study, I think I shared it with you, water reclamation study. And we jumped immediately and we said, we'll share half the cost, but I'm holding that right now because we're not, to be honest with you, we're not, scratch my legs, scratch yours, we're not getting any response.
Patrick, are they refusing to allow us to enter their property, more so because we're not willing to resolve the problem their way? And we're more inclined to do it our way, not their way? Because I just don't understand from a political point of view, from a legal point of view, why do they take this stance?
Well, I think the design that we're going to change it three times to accommodate what they want, not to accommodate us.
Right.
Our reference would be to go out there, have an open channel, save a lot of money. They convey that water from the problematic area down to the stream. I think the way they explain it to us that their construction projects right now and the big tanks that they're building, they're kind of reaching all the change orders that they could absorb and they feel that our project's going to be conflicting with theirs. And we don't think that at all. And in our experience, we think we could go in there, take care of it and get out, but I feel a impact in any of their infrastructure.
Mayor? Karen, do you have an opinion?
Unfortunately, this is probably just a, the deal that has to be cut between the county and the town is what it sounds like. I would, we could certainly call legal and see, especially if there's a dangerous condition and the only resolution for the dangerous condition is to, you know, proceed on to county property. I'd be happy to get involved and maybe get in touch with county attorneys and see what we can.
The issue I have is the safety issue. If those roots are budding up and there's potential for those trees falling, you don't know who they're going to fall on or what they're going to fall on, so that really concerns me.
What about a couple council members coming in with Patrick and asking for a voting? It seems to work along fairly that way.
I think it's an excellent suggestion. We elevated it all the way to the chief engineer and to public works director. I'll be more than happy to elevate it to Ms. Coto if I need to. I think it'd be very helpful if council members would join us to provide and make an awareness. I think that'd be very helpful.
Can I make a change? Can we look into that, Patrick, rather than leaving the money away from it? I don't feel it's doing our duties abandoning our residents.
The only reason, Mr. Mayor, why we're looking at that direction is because they have ruled this going to be on their property and the water treatment plant dealing with union county property, but you're absolutely not, it is impacting our residents and it's been doing that for many years. So I'll be more than happy to arrange a meeting and keep council members informed about the schedule and when we're trying to move them in, if that's what you have in mind.
Is there anything else? All right, just the discussion items, what's your amendment? Two. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Mayor.
How are you doing?
Real quickly, this is standard year up cleanup entry. We just wanted to get it before you. And I speak more about this when we make our presentation, but basically, it's a consent agenda item, wanted to get it here because of the volume and everything. There's no impact to the budget, zero impact, move money from one operation to another, leaving the same class center. So I just wanted to get the end summary for. And I speak more about this when I make my presentation later, so. Just ask for your support. Like I said, Patrick and I reviewed them all. Standard year up cleanup entries.
Make a motion? Make any motion on that?
Good.
I can't make a motion. Mr. Daniels made a motion, all in favor?
Thank you.
opposed, thank you, that's unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Citizen of the quarter, Daniels, do you have a?
This would also, another way that a lot of that, one of our council members, council member Cohen, had a great idea, we're not a citizen of the quarter, and we had our last citizen go back to the water that, that status back in December. So we have to do, we need two quarters to bring us up to date. And at the last meeting, we mentioned that at this meeting on July 11th, we would have names thrown to the hat. And so that's what we're doing tonight. I'm putting of course two names for the first quarter and the second quarter. And I guess Mrs. Howell probably have names or so put in and we'll be able to take the citizens of the quarter. First name I'd like to put in is Mike Head. And the reason for Mike Head is that he's, I've seen him a lot here at the meetings and he's been very, he's on the planning board for many years and he's also been active in the community as far as around the schools, as far as traffic calming around the schools. So I think that type of dedication, he should be looked at as citizen of the quarter for January, February, March. And my second name is Jan Brown, which Mr. Ed also knows. Jan Brown is a member of the ABC board and he's also on the planning committee for many years. But also what Jan Brown does, he lives in Brandon Oaks and he has a golf cart and you see him going around picking up garbage. So that's why I nominated him also for the citizen of the quarter for the second quarter of the year. Mrs. Howell, I'm passing it down to you.
I do, I do, this is the thing that I certainly, I'm really with Mike Head, I would know him as a man, but he doesn't get a lot of attention, but most of the kind of people that are going out there and doing things in their heart and I really respect him for that. And did you have any?
I did.
I think I know who you have.
Mike Head would have been, would have been one of my choices, seems to be, that pretty unanimous choice. Another person that I had in mind was Michelle Reese, who, even though Michelle's getting ready to unfortunately move from our area, she started the adopt a cop program, oh, the first one, which was over now a year ago. And not only did it start out as a, to get basically a Christmas present, I think, for the time, for our deputies here and our show appreciation for the deputies here in Indian Trail, it turned out that we got one for every single share, excuse me, deputy in Union County, which, how many was that, Michelle?
We tried to get all full cut employees and I think our last number was like 289 and maybe some undercutters.
And they got some nice gifts. Also, I know, I know that Mike did help and Mike was also a big help. Michelle headed up that project and I think we were like 80 or 90 people, I mean, Deputy Shore to fill them all. And I know Mike didn't want anybody to know this, so I'm not going to tell exactly who it was that did it, but somebody got like the last 80 or 90 gifts and make sure every deputy had a gift. And I thought that was way above what you, what most people do. And another reason is because of what you do for the children in our neighborhood with your, you're not, you're not really a crossing guard, you're just out there, kind of police stuff goes on out there. But Michelle also, after she did that, she can't stay still, so she gets up and she goes to the, I wouldn't say nursing assisted livings now, and she makes sure that there's activities that go on there and she works with, with the older folks and I think you do, do you do it once a week or do you?
It's been more like two or three, sometimes four. It depends on how many volunteers they have.
But anyway, I just think we're very honored and blessed to have two people like both of you here in our town. And Michelle, we're going to miss you when you finally, when you finally leave. And I swear, I hate to say it, I hope your house don't sell. I think that you can't sell it and you have to stay here, but you know, I don't mean that. I'll, I'll, I'll make you be happy, so we'll miss you.
Do you have any nominations?
So I didn't have any nominations. I figured that you all would come up with great nominations and I'd just go from there. So I think Mike's great, you know, and I think Jan Brown's a great person. I've known Jan for a while, he served on some wards here with the town and very active in the town. So, you know, I think those are some good choices, Gordon. I think every choice was really good.
So what I would like to do is take a, take two motions for the first quarter. And I guess as you were saying, just to come into no bragging, we have Mike Head and Mike Head only. Let's make a vote. I would like to nominate Mike Head, I'll make the motion to nominate Mike Head for the citizen of the quarter, for the first quarter of 2017.
Daniels made the motion to nominate Mr. Head for citizen of the quarter for the first quarter of 2017, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay.
Second motion, we have, we have two names. Jan Brown and Michelle Reese, both active in the community. So I'll make the motion, separate motion for each one, make a motion that we nominate Jan Brown as the second citizen of the quarter, all in favor?
Gordon made the motion to nominate Mr. Brown for second quarter of citizen of the quarter.
Excuse me, Mayor, I have to ask a question. So the third quarter?
It's going to be in September.
When you step into your vote for the first time?
This is a January, February, March is the first quarter. We made June the second quarter.
But I would ask if we consider switching this since she's going to be moving.
It doesn't matter, Michelle, you can all get a vote today.
Okay.
But she says this is one a quarter. She's saying that if we could suspend one and save them for the third quarter, you're going to say that. Well, it may come down to that. It may come down to that. And if David's praying that the house doesn't sell.
It's up to, it's up to council, you want to win in September or you want to make a nomination, you can make a nomination.
Let's do it now, let's do it now.
Let's just, let's just do it the way Gordon was going to do it.
No, thinking about it, let's do it now, Michelle. Okay? I agree with you. I'll change it. So I rescind, I rescind that motion and put up a new second motion that we nominate for second quarter, Michelle Reese, and nominate for the third quarter, Jan Brown.
Okay, but we're, we're doing the third quarter before the third quarter. So that's the only thing.
You're right, but.
No, I'm right, that's.
But you're right, but we're doing it for a reason.
Because she's moving, and she's here now.
Well, I understand that, we can vote on her tomorrow.
Yes, that's what I was, that's what.
I'll, 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 David will never come.
Okay, all right. Mr. Daniels had respectfully requested that we also vote on third quarter, since it's July, but it's not as difficult. There's a motion on the table to nominate Ms. Reese for a second quarter citizen of the quarter and Mr. Brown for third quarter, which we're currently handing to the citizen of the quarter, all in favor?
I'll vote for Michelle Reese for the second quarter. I'm not getting votes. I mean, that's just me, so that just don't matter, that's me. But okay, but it's going to pass anyway.
It's unanimous.
Some people have played with six, eight, nine votes. All right. You want to read that, you want to recap the, the? Do you want to recap the?
Okay. To recap, after the third quarter of the fight, the first citizen of the quarter for January through March has been voted on for Mr. Mike Head, please stand. For the second quarter for July to September, Ms. Michelle Reese, I know you have that. And Mr. Jan Brown for the quarter we're in, which encompasses July 1st to September 30th, I think it's 30 days in September. Mr. Jan Brown, and we'll be able to fight him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess since we're late, we'll be early.
It's just voting on something we want. Ethics training required for elected officials.
Sorry, I just have a little bit to add to this conversation.
Oh, go ahead.
If everyone will look at indiantrail.org, under the community section, there's now a page where you can nominate a citizen of the quarter for us to start thinking about for the fourth quarter. Go to our websites, under community at the top, click on the citizen of the quarter page, there's a nomination form where you can fill it out and submit it on our website.
Is that something you put in pressure?
Of course, of course. And I would ask if we could add a presentation to honor our citizens of the quarter on the agenda for August, so we can put together some things under news release with all three of the votes.
Patrick?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, now for our C, ethics training, what part of the legislative official does it say?
Justice Mayor, the intent of this is to make sure that we all have the training and to assist us in figuring out how to schedule that training. We do have two options, two references. Either we could do it online, or we could do it through webinar in our office, so the reference, we could, we need to choose whoever does not have the training for the last 12 months. Now, there are two items when you go into the ethic training. There is one that we usually require P, and there's another one that's required for the RP, RTCPO.
Carco.
Yes, sir. That one is different, the info needs to be turned in to Raleigh, to an office in Raleigh, so that goes back to Mr. Mayor and Sherri. I think you do have it, Mr. Mayor, already, but Sherri does not, so we will work with council members, Sherri, to make sure that she's got that one.
It's just online, it's pretty easy.
First, they have to get in. We're going to have some problems. We'll have to work that.
If you decide online, we'd be more than happy to send you all the info, and we make the registration ourselves, too.
Council, online in person, tell me if there's.
One question, Patrick.
Yes, sir.
Does the ethics class you take on one of the legislative classes, does that allow you to sit in at the carco, right, or is this a separate ethics for carco?
It might be the same thing. I'm not really minded if you took that, I'm not familiar with that.
I think, I think this, this ethics training, the ABC one, isn't that what new councilmen, new councilpersons that come in have to take that exam? So, you know, I know I took it when I first came in at UNC, so I don't have to take that again. It's just whoever is new has to do it within the first 12 months. That's how I understand that.
We're talking about the same, the same ethics training. So there's two separate ones.
There's two separate ones. The first one, that this ethic training required for elected officials is for new officials who have to complete that, and you can pick a class at UNC and do a class for ethics. That's what I know I had to do, and I did that in Chapel Hill. And then the second one that Mr. Sadek has on here is for the Charlotte Regional Transportation Board. So as you know, every, every two years, new people can sit on that board. So with every two years, you have to do an ethics disclosure or certification, which I know I did mine online. So that's what it is. That's what I believe these two are.
Okay.
I might have misunderstood the requirement. I thought that we need to make sure that every 12 months, the class needs to be taken. I'll be more than happy to check.
Yeah, please, and I, no, no, don't take my word. This is just, all I know is I've been sitting here almost four years, and I've taken one when I first came in, so.
Patrick, do you look into that?
I'll be more than happy, I'll refer to it for council.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Item D, NCDOT ride-of-way maintenance. Patrick?
Briefly, we met with NCDOT on numerous items today. One of them was maintenance of the ride-of-way. We do right now maintain some of their ride-of-way in regard to mowing grass. We're talking about approximately 100,000 square feet. We just made them aware that if we get any inquiries in regard to that ride-of-way, we're going to go ahead and submit the request to their office, so that way they could pick up the bill from that one. They were okay with that, so they provided us with a full number, and we're moving forward in that direction. So that would lessen the costs a little bit. The second item that we talked to them about was, there are many streets out there in the city that require maintenance. Also, they were willing to, they gave us many references, either we contract the work, like the same patching and track boring, and we submit a bill to them, and they share the study to that work, or we could give them the, tell them what streets we're dealing with, and they could deal with that themselves. But they're very positive, they agree, and we're going to evaluate the listed streets, and they will get back with us with what would be the best way for us time-wise to go ahead and take care of those deficiencies. It was a good meeting, and I wanted to share that with you.
Thank you.
That brings us to board and committee members opening the recommendations.
Thank you, sir. We did provide in the packet a spreadsheet showing the number of committee members that have taken positions right now, what we'd like, we'd like to fill them if it's possible.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to go ahead and, if it's all right with that everybody, Patrick, what seats? I'd like to do one, one.
You're right. This is what's open. I agree with Gary, just do one vote, get everybody in. I also want to tell you that I've been in four years. It's the first time I could understand the Ouija board. Thank you.
And.
And the names that are on the front page are all the names that are attached here.
Yes, sir. What we, what we did is we started sort of a little bit internal process, that application comes in, the town liaison will take it before the committee chair, interview it, we get consensus from him, he comes back to us, I'll review it myself, and then when we're happy with all the applications, we submit them before you for review and approval. And if it's possible, you got a chance to look at all of them, we ask you, if you don't mind, to make.
Yeah, I saw them all, I read through them all, that you guys were filling? Because there's no, there's no overlap, so does anybody oppose to anybody who wants to fill and volunteer their time to sit on one of these boards?
I'm open to vote the names of this for mass motion.
Well, that's because there's nobody that applied for it. No, well, well, we can approve these, and then there'll be other slots, right?
Yes, we do have two more that we couldn't, I think it's sorted, we started next weekend.
Are there, are there available seats for those two people?
Do applications, if I'm mistaken, or we already included them in this list?
One is reapplying. What are we talking, I didn't catch the board.
Yeah, so what we're saying is that I have this list of open positions with names of people who want to volunteer to sit on these boards. Shirley has mentioned that there are two people who applied, I guess, post when this was produced. So what I'm asking is, the two people who applied, what boards did they want to sit on, and are there open seats for those two people to be able to fill those at the next town council meeting?
The staff and chair were made aware of all of the applications that we had. There's only one woman, I can't remember the name, that was looked over. There are two additional applications for the ABC Board, which has not been discussed tonight at the chair's request.
Okay.
So there, to my knowledge, I would have to verify that, but I don't think there's anyone else. I'm going to give the name of the person sitting here. It's John Igenbro, he was reapplying for the Board of Adjustments, and Samantha. Right, they're both on here. The board of paper I have here is.
Not on the Board of Adjustments.
The Board of Adjustments is John Igenbro, he's for seat five. And Samantha Towns has.
Has seat two of the planning board.
This one, they're on there.
Yeah, they're on there. Are you satisfied, Shirley?
We're going to just go through the names real quick, and you make them up.
Councilor Towns.
Or you can do it if you want.
So I'd like to make a motion to fill the Indian Trail Board and Committee open positions. So for the Board of Adjustments, seat three, I'd like to nominate, or make a motion to approve Donald Butler, and I'm sorry if I, if I mix up these names. For the Board of Adjustment, seat five, I'd like to nominate John Enenbro. For the parks, seat two, Steve Dodson. For parks, seat four, Chris Bova. For the Planning Board and Tree Advisory Board, seat two, Samantha Towns. For the Public Safety Committee, seat three, Art Spur. For the Public Safety Committee, seat, seat seven, John Crone. For the Stormwater Committee, seat one, Joshua Allen. For the Stormwater Committee, seat six, Larry Miller. And for this, lastly, for the Stormwater Committee, seat seven, Janine McIntyre. And I apologize if I butchered anybody's name.
We've made the motion, all in favor?
Anybody here from any people there tonight would like to?
Can you stand up, Paul Rea?
Please.
And tell us your name, please.
John Igenbro, Board of Adjustments, been there and enjoy it.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Donald Butler, Board of Adjustments.
All right.
Steve Dodson.
And Steve, you're Board of Adjustments, right?
No, Park.
Park, got it.
And Josh Allen, Stormwater Advisory Board.
Got it. Thank you.
That brings us to close session.